Hare Krishna Prabhuji, thank you so much.
Hare Krishna.
Thank you, it's such a wonderful feeling when you were here in the US, that was a wonderful feeling. Now hopefully you have settled back to your routine. And we get to see you back on Zoom in a familiar setting with a familiar background. So, thank you so much Prabhuji for taking out your valuable time especially on such an important day. As the vyas puja of your Guru Maharaj, Sri Shri Madhada Govindam Maharajji. And for sharing your talk on Sri Bhaktira Samritasindhu. So, thank you so much, I cannot say in words how much this means to me. Specifically Sri Bhaktira Samritasindhu has opened my eyes to so many new concepts in Bhakti. And the inspiration for undergoing that study came solely from you. Thank you so much Prabhuji and there is no other, no better person with whom I could request to, you know, give this talk as sort of the concluding session of our study of the Eastern Division of Sri Bhaktira Samritasindhu. Thank you once again Prabhuji and I turn it over to you.
Thank you, thank you so much Paramkarna Prabhu. And all the wonderful devotees here, thank you Paramkarna Prabhu for kindly inviting me to speak something on Sri Bhaktira Samritasindhu. I understand that this is the final session of the Tirasamritsindhu.
Yes.
And is it also the final session of the Bhaktishastry or there are still some sessions remaining?
No Prabhuji, this will be the final session for the Bhaktishastry, we started with Bhagwat Gita then Sri Shok Nishad, Sri Upadeshamrit and now.
Wonderful. I'm very, very honoured and I'm very, very thankful to you Prabhu for kindly inviting me to speak something here on Sri Rupagoswami's Bhaktira Samritsindhu. I'm very thankful to all the wonderful devotees here who are kindly present and who have kindly given their time. And especially Paramkarna Prabhu has been, you know, very dear, very like-minded. And Paramkarna Prabhu, he took a very, immediately took an interest in Sri Rupagoswami's literature. As soon as, you know, he heard about the deep meanings that were given in Bhaktira Samritsindhu. That's how I know Paramkarna Prabhu to be like-minded, like-hearted. And I'm so honoured to be, you know, in his circle of Sahridai, like-minded devotees. Very thankful to all of you also for kindly being present here, I'm also very thankful to Gamodar Leela Mathaji. For kindly assisting Paramkarna Prabhu so nicely. And dear devotees, once again, thanks to each and every one of you. Dear devotees, today is the final session of Sri Bhaktira Samritsindhu. Where we are discussing Prema Bhakti. But before we begin, it is shrist parapara to perform Mangalacharan, auspicious invocations. Most of us know these verses, you can kindly sing along with me. Om agyanatimirandhasya jyanaanjanasalakaya chakshurunmilitam yena tasmai shri gurave namaha. Sri chaitanya manobhistam sthapi tam yena bhutale soyam rupah kadamayam dadate swapadanthikam. Vandeham shri guru shri yutapadakalam shri guru dvaishnavamcha. Sri rupam sagrajatam sahaganaraguna thanvitam tam sajivam. Sadvaitam savadhutam parijanasahitam krishna chaitanya devam. Sri radha krishna padan sahaganalitha shri vishakhan vitamscha. Namaha om vishnu padaya krishna prekshtaya bhutare. Shrimate bhaktivedanta svamin nitanamine. Namastey sarsvate devay gauravani prachari ne. Nirvisheshashunnavadi paaschatyade shataari ne. Namoh mahavadanyaya krishna prema pradayate. Prashnaya krishna chaitanya namne gauratrushe namaha. He krishna karuna sindho dinabandho jagatpate. Gopesh gopika kant radha kant namostute. Taptakanchana gaurangi radhe vranda varishvari. Prishabhanusute devi ra'amani hari priye. Vanchakalpatarupyascha pripa sindhu bhya evacha. Patitanaam pavanebhyo vaishnavebhyo namu namaha. Jai shri krishna chaitanya prabhu nitya ananda. Shri advaita gadaghara shri vasadi gaurabhakvrenda. Hare krishna, hare krishna, krishna krishna, hare hare. Hare Rama, hare Rama, Rama Rama, hare hare. Sri Rupagoswami prabhu pathi jai, Sri Rupagoswami prabhu pathi jai, Sri Jiva Goswami prabhu pathi jai, Anandakoti Vaishnavrende ki jai, Nithai gaur premanande, Hare Hare Gaur. Thank you once again, Paramkarna Prabhu for kindly inviting me to speak something here on Sri Bhaktira Samritsindhu. And I can see that the many devotees who are present here, I'm thankful to each and every one of you. Dear devotees, today is the final session, it's on a very special day. Today is Sri Jagannath Rathayatra. And on this particular day, Sri Chetney Mahaprabhu tried to find words to express his emotions. But Bhagwan failed to find words. And dear devotees, on this very day, it was Sri Rupagoswami who understood what was in the heart of Bhagwan. And composed his most brilliant verse. Because of which we say Sri chaitanya manobhistam sthapi tam yena bhutale soyam rupah kadamayam dadate swapadanthikam. So it was on this day that Sri Rupagoswami understood Sri chaitanya manobhistam. Although he understood it already but specifically the most intense desire that Sri Chetney Mahaprabhu felt on the Rathayatra. Which Chetney Mahaprabhu himself could not express in words properly due to not finding the suitable words. Sri Rupagoswami found suitable words and expressed it himself. Today is that particular day, dear devotees, what better day to understand Sri Bhaktira Samritsindhu? The magnum opus of Sri Rupagoswami. Dear devotees, till now, the sections that have been covered. Because Bhaktira Samritsindhu is a sindhu, is an ocean. And in an ocean, wherever you go, there is water. You are in the middle of the ocean and all around you there is water. But this wa- there is, this water of the ocean is comparable to amrita, to nectar, it is actually an ocean of nectar. So Bhakti rasa eva amrita. So Bhakti rasa itself is there. And rasa sindhu and its ocean is known as Bhakti rasaamritasindhu. So dear devotees, we are trying to swim in the Bhaktira Samritasindhu. And Sri Rupagoswami divided the ocean into four directions. That is purva vibhag, it starts from the east, eastern direction. Then daksan vibhag, then south. Then paschim vibhag, west. And then uttar vibhag, north. So dear devotees, we are studying purva vibhag, eastern division. And we have already covered the section on bhava bhakti. Now we have to see the section on prema bhakti. So this is what is being described here. In the purva vibhag, in the eastern division, there are four major waves. So what are the four major waves? In the first wave, the general definition of bhak was given. Then, dear devotees, in the second wave, sadhana bhakti began. In the third wave, it was bhava bhakti and in the fourth wave, it is prema bhakti. Dear devotees, we have already studied what is bhava bhakti. And what is bhava bhakti that Sri Rupagoswami describes? So Sri Rupagoswami describes bhava bhakti in the third wave first verse. And how does he describe it? I will share my screen so all of you will be able to have a, get it. This is Bhaktira Samritsindhu 1.3.1 where he says, Shuddha satva visheshatma, prema suryamshu samyabhag. Ruchibis chittamasranya kridasau bhava ujjate. This was the definition of bhava bhakti. What is bhava bhakti? He says, shuddha satva visheshatma. A very specific type of shuddha satva guna. It is composed of, we all know that there are three gunas, three modes of nature. But beyond that is shuddha satva. That satva guna which is free, which is untainted by any material modes, is known as shuddha satva. And vishesh, a very specific type of shuddha satva is its atma, it is made up of. Bhava is made up of, it is composed of a very specific type of shuddha satva. Prema surya, if prema is the brilliant sun, amshu samyabhag, then bhava is its ray. Bhava is the ray of the brilliant sun of prema. So bhava is the stage which occurs just before prema. And ruchibhi, and by these rays, by its brilliance, chittamasranya krit. It makes the chitta, it makes the heart masrana, masrana means very soft, butter-like. Asav bhava ujjate, therefore it is known as bhava. Dear devotees, what is bhava? Bhava is the stage which is just before prema. And Sri Rupagoswami will say, atraswalpapisur ashru kampa kulakada. In tiny quantity, the devotee begins to experience satvika bhavas. What are those satvika bhavas? Kampa, ashru, you know, tears and shivering of body, kulak, standing of hair on end etcetera, in tiny quantity. They will be experienced, so this has already been covered previously. Now dear devotees, after the first rays of the sun have become visible on the eastern horizon, dear devotees, we are in the eastern division. Therefore the sun is also going to arise in the east. So in the eastern horizon, when the first rays of the sun appear, what do they do? So immediately those first rays of the sun, they cause the heart to become very soft. Very soft, this is bhava bhakti. Bhava is being compared to the first rays of the sun. Now dear devotees, what is required for the sun to arise? Now there is only one thing required for the sun to arise and that is time. In some time, the sun is going to arise. This is the indication given here, in some time, prema bhakti will arise. So in most situations, prema bhakti is only going to be a matter of time. Unless the devotee ends up committing some apparad, some major apparad. That happens, prema will certainly arise. Dear devotees, assuming the best, we are, that prema bhakti will arise soon. And once prema arises, Sri Rupagoswami is going to begin his definition of prema bhakti. And this dear devotees is Sri Rupagoswami's definition of prema bhakti that has already been covered. Samyak masrana swanto mamatvati shyankita. Bhava saeva sandraatma budahi prema nigadyate. Budahi, by the learned souls, prema iti nigadyate, it is glorified as prema. Which bhakti is glorified as prema? Samyak masrana swanto, when the sun fully arises and makes the heart completely soft, samyak masrana. In bhava bhakti, it had begun to make the heart soft. But now it is samyak masrana, it is completely soft. And how, what are the indications? Ankita, the heart is marked by feelings of atishaya mamatva. Excessive belongingness towards Krishna, Krishna is mine, I belong to Krishna. So mamatva, the feeling of belongingness is atishaya, is excessive. Bhava saeva, it is that bhava itself, sandraatma, when it becomes fully condensed. Budahi prema nigadyate, then the learned people call it prema. Dear devotees, Sri Jiva Goswami says in the commentary, Attra sandraatmakatvam swaru palakshana, the main characteristic of prema bhakti is sandraatma, it is condensed bhava. That is the main characteristic, dear devotees. Anya dvayam tattasthalakshana, the remaining two are secondary characteristic, what are the remaining two characteristics? Samyak masrana swanto, it completely melts the heart. And second characteristic, mamatvati shyankita. The heart is marked by excessive feelings of belongingness towards Krishna. These two are secondary characteristics but the main characteristics is bhava saeva sandraatma, bhava has to become completely condensed and then, dear devotees, budahi, then the learned people will call it prema, that is the definition. Dear devotees, in this way, Sri Rupagoswami begins prema bhakti but he cannot speak about, he cannot give a definition unless he supports it from the previous acharyas. Therefore he supports it from the previous literature. Yatha pancharatri, just as it is given in the Pancharatra literature. Now dear devotees, this particular verse is slightly difficult in construction, I will try to explain, please hear carefully. Ananya mamata vishnava mamata prema sangata bhaktirittyuchate bhishma prahlada udhava naradai. So the same definition, ananya mamata. The Pancharatra literature also says, ananya mamata. Mamata, belongingness in nothing else, ananya, one-pointed mamata. So mamata, belongingness should not be in any other object of the material world. So where should be belong, where should be the feeling of belonging? Vishnava mamata, that feeling, that belongingness should be in Shri Krishna, Shri Vishnu. When that feeling of belongingness is in Vishnu, okay, then it is known as bhava. But when prema sangata, when it is equipped by the higher stage of prema. Then bhaktirittyuchate, it is actually called as the final stage of bhakti. By whom, bhishma, prahlada, udhava, narada etcetera. So dear devotees, ananya mamata, attachment in nothing else. Vishnava mamata, attachment towards Vishnu. But prema sangata, which has fully developed in the stage of prema. Known as actual bhakti, bhishma prahlada udhava narada. So this dear devotees, is the definition by the previous acharyas. So Sri Jiva Goswami says, atrasvamatam udharadam evam vritta. Actually Rupagoswami wants to quote that verse evam vritta, which he is going to quote in some time. But before that, he also quotes Matantaram, he also quotes another opinion by quoting Pancharatra literature. Bhakti ratra bhava, bhakti here means bhava. But when it is accompanied by prema, prema sangata, it becomes known as prema bhakti. So but actually it is bhava bhakti. But bhava bhakti, when it has fully developed, it becomes known as prema bhakti, so this is what is the message here. Then Rupagoswami clarifies, bhakti prema ujjate, actually that bhakti which was defined in the previous verse is also known as prema. By bhishma mukhyayriyatra tu sangata, vishma etcetera call it prema, where it is sangata, where it is accompanied by deep attachment to Vishnu. And mamata, anya mamatvayana varjita. And when there is anya mamatvayana varjita, there is no other attachment, nobody else. So very simple dear devotees, when there is no attachment to any other objects of the material world. When there is attachment exclusively towards Bhagwan and this attachment is in its fully refined state. This dear devotees is known as prema, to make it very simple. Now, dear devotees, we have specified that bhava turns into prema. Now, Rupagoswami says, bhavotho ati prasadoth, shri harer iti sad vidha. Dear devotees, this type of bhakti, this prema arises by bhava uttha. Usually it arises by bhava because bhava is the first ray of the sun of prema. Usually it arises by bhava, bhava uttha. Or ati prasad uttha shri harer. Or in some rare cases, prema also arises by ati prasad, excessive mercy, excessive pleasure of shri harer. In this way, two types are there in which prema arises. Tatra bhavoth. Now, Rupagoswami says, now let's understand prema that arises through the usual method, that is through the stage of bhava. Rupagoswami says, bhava eva, it is bhava itself. Antaranga nam anga nam, when anga nam antaranga nam anu sevaya. When bhava is further nourished by its internal limbs, what are the internal limbs? The internal, which as vibhav, anubhav, limbs, narish bhava, sthai bhava. Then arudha, it climbs paramutkarsham to its highest stage. And then bhavoth parikirti, then that prema becomes known as that prema which has arisen out of bhava. Dear devotees, when bhava is further nourished by, you know, its other components, vibhav, anubhav, yavichari bhav etcetera. Then anu sevaya, when it is repeatedly nourished. Arudha paramutkarsham, it attains its highest stage, the pinnacle of bhava. Is known as bhavoth prema, is known as prema that has arisen due to bhava. Now, Rupagoswami says, tatra vaidha bhavotho. Now dear devotees, bhava also arises because of two types of bhakti. Because sadhana bhakti was of two types, vaidhi sadhana, raganug sadhana. Vaidhi bhavoth, vaidha bhavotho. So that bhava, that which is bhava, but that which has arisen due to vaidhi bhakti. Yatha ekadashay, as it is specified in the 11th skandha of Shri Manthagvatham, 11 to 14. Evam vritta swapriyanaam kirtya jaat anurago druta chitta ujjai. Asati adhoro ditiravutigayat yunmadavandrityati lokabhayya. So dear devotees, this particular verse specifies, evam vritta. In this way, the devotee who has taken vritta in the Bhagavatam. You know, there is a discussion going on between the Navayogendras and Maharaj Nimi. In that particular section, this verse is there. Evam vritta swapriyanaam kirtya jaat anurago, dear devotees, evam vritta, in this way, the devotee who has taken a vritta. What vritta? Of singing Bhagwan's name, of chanting Bhagwan's name, so that vritta has been taken by the devotee. Swapriyanaam kirtya, by performing kirtan of that name which is dear to him. Jaat anurago, the devotee develops anurag. The devotee develops the stage of prema. Druta chitta, the devotee's heart is fully melted, this dear devotees matches with prema bhakti. Because samyak masrana swanto was the definition, druta chitta, the heart fully melts. And what does the, what is the result? Ujjai, what are the anubhavas, what are the results? Ujjai hasati, he loudly sometimes laughs, roditi, sometimes shouts, rauti, sometimes cries, gayati. Sometimes sings, unmadavat like a madman, drityati, he dances, lokabhayya, for his indifferent to public opinion. This dear devotees has been quoted from the Shri Madh Bhagavatam. If we see, this is Shri Madh Bhagavatam. And the translation is in front of us. By chanting the holy name of the supreme lord, dear devotees, swapriyanaam. By chanting that name which is dear to him, one comes to the stage of love, prema. And the devotee is fixed in his vow as an eternal servant, evam vritta. He gradually becomes very much attached to a particular name and form of the supreme personality of God it. As his heart melts with ecstatic love, he laughs very loudly or cries or shouts. Sometimes he sings and dances like a madman, for his indifferent to public opinion. In this way, dear devotees, the stage of prema bhakti is described. Sri Jiva Goswami says, atr evam vritta iti vaidhi sambhandat. He took a vow of chanting name, that vow indicates vaidhi bhakti. Because vows are taken in which bhakti, they are taken in vaidhi bhakti. So vaidhi sambhandat, tannivrittavam, though this bhakti has arisen, this prema has arisen from vaidhi bhakti. But it is not simply vaidhi bhakti now. Swapriyanaam kirtya, he is now chanting that name which is dear to himself. So Jiva Goswami says, priya iti bhava utthavam. So swapriya means he now has developed the stage of bhava and prema. Swa iti mamatvayuttavam, swapriyanaam is the name which is dear to him, that feeling of ananya mamata. Mamatvati shyankita, all those feelings are there already. Jaat anuraga, he has already developed, you know, the stage of anurag, tad atishayatvam, excessive mamatva. Dear devotees, Sri Jiva Goswami is telling how this particular verse is the verse which Sri Rupagoswami actually wanted to quote as support for definition of prema bhakti. So this is the verse that actually supports Rupagoswami's definition very closely. So anyways, this dear devotees is vaidhi, vaidha bhavoth. But then there is the second type, raganugia bhavotho. And now, that prema which arises due to bhava that has been attained by practicing raganuga bhakti. That is raganugia bhava. So, dear devotees, yatha padme, as it is given in Padmapuran. What is given in Padmapuran? So there is a description of a particular fortunate lady. Chandrakantir varanana, some people say her name is Chandrakanti. Some, you can also interpret it as she was having the complexion of the moon. So anyways, na patinkamayet kanchit, she does not desire any husband. Brahmacharya stithasada, she is always situated in brahmacharya, this lady did not desire any husband. She always was naturally fixed in an unmarried state, she never married, an ashrami lady. Vamurtim dhayanti. And she continues to meditate, perform smaran of Shri Krishna's form. Chandrakantir varanana, she is Chandrakanti. If this can mean her name is Chandrakanti or this can mean she has the complexion of the moon, the effulgence of the moon, varanana, it's very beautiful. Sri Krishna gatham gayanti, she sings, as she sings the narrations of Sri Krishna. Romanch udved lakshana. You know, there is romancha. Lakshana, there is, her hair stand on end, the symptoms of prema bhakti are fully visible. Asmin manvanta resnickdha, Sri Krishna priya vartaya. And she has become snickdha, her heart has fully melted. Asmin manv, very life, her heart has melted. Sri Krishna priya vartaya by discussing topics that are you know, that are very dear to her and related to Sri Krishna. In this verse, dear devotees, there is no indication at all of any vaidhi bhakti. Dhayanti indicates she is performing smaran. Gayanti indicates she is performing kirtan. Dhayanti, gayanti, smaran and kirtan, the two most important limbs of raganuga bhakti are mentioned here. And both of these, Sri Krishna priya vartaya, whatever is spontaneously tasteful to her, she is doing not as a vritta. Not because I have to force my mind to do it, otherwise my mind will never agree. No, 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 not like that, dear devotees. She is doing because she has raganugia bhava. Her bhava has arisen due to innate organic attachment to Sri Krishna. So this dear devotees is the description of raganugia bhava. Hmm. Sri Jiva Goswami says tam eva murtim dhayanti, she is meditating on that particular form. Iti, this indicates tasyam murthavpurvam bhava jata hasit, in previous life, she already had attained the stage of bhava. In that particular form, therefore in this life she was spontaneous. Kanchis anyat patim na kamayet, she does not desire any other husband. Hmm. Na kamayet iti garhama mataya prema darshitam, she doesn't desire anybody else, only desires Krishna, ananya mamata, she has one pointed affection towards Bhagwan. Snickdha babhuva. Therefore she has become completely melted you know, in her heart. This dear devotees is raganugia bhava. And this is different from vaidha bhava. So what is the difference between vaidha bhava and raganugia bhava? We will come to it later. But we said, prema arises by two causes. Bhava uttha either by bhava. Those bhava can be two types, vaidhi and raga. And the second was harer ati prasaduttam. Sometimes with excessive mercy of Sri Hari. Now, these cases are slightly rare. That they have not performed, somebody has not performed any vaidhi or raganuga sadhan. Still by the excessive mercy of Hari, somebody gets prema. So Sri Rupa Goswami says ath harer ati prasadutha. Now, that prema that arises due to Hari's excessive mercy. Harerati prasadoyam sangadana adiratmanha. Harer ati prasad. What is the ati prasad? What is the excessive happiness of Hari? He says sangadana adiratmanha. Where Hari gives atmanha, his own sangadana etcetera, sangadana adhi. His own direct association etcetera. So unless Bhagwan gives his own direct association, we cannot say that prema has arisen by Hari's mercy. Usually, in most cases, prema arises by bhava. In some cases, it's only after prema there is darshan. But in some cases, darshan happens before prema. And only those rare cases are known as harer ati prasadutha. They are arising due to excessive mercy of Hari. Sangadana adhir. So, first comes Hari's sangadana, Hari first gives his association and then prema arises. So that, dear devotees, is the rare case. So, this is what is the second type. Example for the same is also given in the eleventh skandha, eleven, ten, two, eleven, twelve, seven. So Krishna is describing many entities, he describes. You know, Gajendra, he describes many demons have attained me, many Gandharva has attained me, many kinnaras attained me. He gives a big list. But te na adhit shrutiganah, all these were exceptional cases who did not study the shruti is the vedas. Na upasiita mahattama, neither did they serve the great sages such as Narad Muni, he served great sages, but these individuals did not even serve the great sages. And did not, you know, attain vedic knowledge from the great sages. Of vritta tapta tapasaha, they did not perform any major austerities. Mat sangan, simply by my association, ma mupagata, they attained me. Krishna says to them. So Sri Jiva Goswami says purvakteshute kechit bali prabhutaya. Previously, he has mentioned Bali etcetera, Gajendra Bali, who did not perform any major sadhana. Did not, you know, approach any vishnava guru. Bali Maharaja's guru, oh Shukracharya, did not approach any vishnava guru etcetera. So. Still they attained me. How did they attain? Sri Jiva Goswami says mat sangad, simply by Krishna's association. So. Desham satam madde prathanasya mama sangath, Krishna is counting himself also as a sadhu. They did not associate with any other sadhu, they associated with me and I am the head of all the sadhus. So they associated with the best sadhu. And prema nam prapya, they attained prema, ma mupagata, thus they attained me. Intu shri bhagavata swatantratvapi, although Bhagwan is independent. Satam madde swayam gananam. He is counting himself amongst the sadhus. That they did not uh, associate with any sadhu, but they associated with me. Arre Bhagwan, you are counting yourself among the sadhus? Ha ha, vinayasa bhava deva. This because of Bhagwan's humility. Iti shri bhagavat prasadutha, this is the type of prema that arises exclusively by the excessive mercy of Bhagwan. So this dear devotees is bhagavat prasadutha, ati prasadutha, by excessive mercy of Bhagwan. Now. Dear devotees. This type of prema is also of two types. So this prema which arises due to Bhagwan's direct contact, Bhagwan's excessive mercy is two types, vidha. Mahatmyajana yukta cha. That which is, that prema which is equipped with awe and reverence and knowledge of the opulence of Bhagwan, knowledge of the greatness of Bhagwan. That is the first type and kevala cha. That prema which stands by itself, which is not accompanied by any feeling of awe and reverence. This is, these are the two types of prema that arises, that arise due to Bhagwan's excessive mercy. Atha adyo. Now, the first type. The Pancharatra literature. It is specified. So that is known as prema, bhakti here means prema. So sneha here means bhava. That bhava becomes known as prema. When it is mahatmyajana yukta stu, it is equipped by knowledge of awe and reverence of Bhagwan, sudridha, it is firmly fixed, sarvato dika, it is greater than all, everything else. This is known as bhakti, prema bhakti. Taya saarashthi adhi. And from such bhakti, one attains liberation such as saarashthi. Sarupya etcetera, na anyatha. One does not attain liberation in any other way. So this dear devotees is the uh verse which specifies, the first type per mahatmyajana is
Can others hear me? Okay.
Oh, probably saying computer crash coming in two minutes.
No. Yeah, so Prabhuji just messaged me, his computer crashed and he will join back in two minutes. So we will just stay put. So, uh, to maintain the, sort of the, minimize the disturbance, I have disabled the unmute uh, capability for now. If you have any questions and depending on Prabhuji's time towards the end. We will have some Q and A or we might have Q and A and we will, you can raise your hands. And then we will take questions depending on the amount of time Prabhuji has. Not right now, you can raise it towards the end, otherwise yeah, I will announce when you can raise your hands and then you can raise it. Ah, Prabhuji is back. One second, let me make him co-host. Hello Krishna Prabhuji, you can unmute yourself. You are a co-host now, are you able to unmute? Yes, Prabhuji, we can hear you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really sorry, my computer crashed. Yeah, let's continue from where we had paused.
Yes, Prabhuji, please.
Alright. So Sri Rupa Goswami So by such prema bhakti, one, saarashthi etcetera, na anyatha, not otherwise. The second type of prema which arises by Bhagwan's mercy is kevalo. Is you know have any trace of Bhagwan's awe and reverence. Yatha tatra eva, in the same Pancharatra literature. Manogatir avichinna. Where there is avichinna manogatir, where there is constant remembrance of Bhagwan. Samadhi has been attained, harau prema paritluta. It is fully, you know, flooded with prema. With feelings of that prema which is, which does not have any mahatmyajana, any awe and reverence. Abhisandhi vinirmukta. Which is free from abhisandhi, any other desire for personal happiness. Sukha, aishwarya are not present in this one. Abhisandhir vinirmukta. Bhaktir, such bhakti, such prema. Such kevala prema. Vishnu vashankari, it completely brings Sri Krishna under his control. So Sri Rupa Goswami then gives his conclusion. Those who follow vaidhi bhakti, their prema will be with mahima jyana yukta, it will be equipped with and reverence, you know, of Bhagwan. That is one hundred percent confirmed. Raganuga shritana amtu prayashaha. You know, and huh? In most cases, those who take shelter of raganuga bhakti. They will attain kevala prema, kevala prema means that prema which has no mixture of aishwarya jyana, opulence etcetera of Bhagwan. Prayashaha, in most cases. Jiva Goswami asked the question, why in most cases? He was sitting right there next to Rupa Goswami, why in most cases? Rupa Goswami replied, vaidhi amshayukthatvapi na kevala ya, sometimes some people follow raganuga bhakti, but still they are this is a vaidhi bhakti. So, to the degree that vaidhi bhakti is present, to that degree raganuga is absent. That is what it is, dear devotees. So, prayashaha, somebody might have taken shelter of raganuga bhakti, but some limbs of vaidhi bhakti might still be continuing. Therefore. For such individuals, prayashaha, in most cases. They will attain, but not in all cases. Now. What is the sequence of progress? By which one attains prema? So that sequence is mentioned here, dear devotees, and this sequence is very commonly quoted sequence. Sadhaka nam, for all the sadhkas. Premna pradur bhave, in the arising of prema, ayam bhaved karma, this is the sequence. Jiva Goswami says Most cases, this is the prema, there are, this is the sequence, there are many sequences for prema to arise. In most cases, this is the sequence. Why? Because sometimes prema arises even without shraddha, sadhu sang, bhajan kriya, anarthani vritti, just it arises directly by harer ati prasadutha. A direct excessive mercy of Hari. So in that case, this sequence will not apply. But in case when sadhan bhakti is being performed, usually this sequence applies. Adav shraddha. First kam shraddha, so adav prathamay, first sadhu sangha, shastra, shravanadvara, shraddha, tad artha visvasa. So first comes sadhu sangha, initial sadhu sangha. That initial sadhu sangha, one gets to hear bona fide shastra. Through that bona fide shastra, shravan, shraddha, he gets artha visvas, he gets faith in the meanings of the shastra. So shraddha means faith in the meanings of shastra. Tata, thereafter sadhu sangho. Jiva Goswami says tata prathamana antaram vritiyasadhu sangho. After the initial sadhu sangha comes the second sadhu sangha, the serious sadhu sangha, bhajan riti shiksha nibandhana. Where one is given shiksha regarding the path of bhajan. This is the second sadhu sangha, ath bhajanakriya, then the sadhaka performs bhajana. Tata anarthani vritti, then the things which are unwanted for bhakti. You know, one, the sadhaka gets rid of them naturally. Tata nishtha. What is the meaning of nishtha? Jiva Goswami says Nishtha means one performs the limbs of bhakti avikshapena without disturbance, satatyan continuously. Ruchi stataha, then one attends ruchi, ruchi means abhilasha. The sweet desire to attain Krishna, kintu buddhipurvikayam, but this is right now only through Kintu buddhipurvikayam, but this is right now only through intelligence. When one wants to attain Shri Krishna. Tata asakti, then asakti, the desire becomes spontaneous, swarasiki. Tata bhavas, then arises bhava, tataprema, then arises prema, abhi udanchati completely arises, abhi in all directions, udanchati rises. Abhi udanchati, abhyudanchati, prema arises in all directions. So this is the sequence by which prema is attained. Dear devotees, Sri Jiva Goswami says, what is the nature of prema? It is inexplicable. Dhanyasya yasya, for that dhanya vyakti, for that blessed person, dhanyasya yasya, for that blessed person. Unmiliti prema chetasi, navah unmiliti prema chetasi, in whose heart, prema has arisen. Asya mudra sushthu sudurgama, his activities, his behavior is sudurgam, is impossible, very difficult to understand even by antarvani bhir. Antarvani bhir means those who have internalized the words of shastra, shastra vidbhi, those, norers of shastra also cannot easily understand the behavior of a person who has attained prema. In Chaitanya Charitamriti said, Vaishnavera kriya mudra vighye nabujhae. Vaishnavas activities cannot be understood even by the learned, but which vaishnava? Sometimes that verse is misapplied, even to new kanishthadikari, no, no, no. Prema yasya unmiliti chetasi, in whose heart, prema has arisen, that vaishnavas activities cannot be understood even by antarvani bhir. Those, antarvani bhir, Jiva Goswami says, shastra vidbhi, those who have understood shastra, antarvani, they have internalized the vani of shastra. Even by such people, you know, they cannot understand the emotions, the moods, the activities, the temperament. You know, the disposition of a premi bhakta. This dear devotees is the sum and substance of the verse. Mudra means paripatti, you know, the sequence of behavior, mood, disposition etcetera, all these things cannot be understood. Eva shri Narada Pancharatray, therefore it is specified, the same thing is specified in Narada Pancharatray. It is specified. This person who was completely overtaken by prema, bhava and prema, na vedasukhamatmana, you know, he did not understand his personal happiness. Dukham chaiti, nor did he consider his personal distress. Maheshani, paramananda aplutaha. So he was, he was completely overwhelmed, completely drowned in paramananda. He is completely drowned in the topmost bliss. So this is the nature of a person who has attained prema. And so this is, dear devotees, the nature of the person who has attained prema, does not, does not understand his own happiness or distress to be anything important. He only understands Krishna's happiness to be the most important. So this dear devotees is the example of that. Now does after attainment of prema, are there any further developments of prema? Rupa Goswami says, yes, there are further developments, but I am not going to count them here. Prema eva vilasitva, there are further developments of prema, but there are, they are basically vilas. They are manifestations of prema only. Viral yaad sadhakeshopi, and in sadhakas, they are very, very, very rare. Those other manifestations such as sneha, pranay, man, they are very, very, very rare. Attra sneha dayo bhedha, therefore these other divisions such as sneha etcetera, vivichya nahishamsita. And they are not discussed and explained here in this literature, Bhaktira Samrichindu. Indication is that they will be discussed in the literature which discusses sidhas, perfected associates. Ujwal Nelmani will discuss those particular stages. This is not in Bhaktira Samrichindu. Sri Rupa Goswami concludes the fourth wave of Bhaktira Samrichindu. All this that I am describing, this madhuri, this sweetness of bhaktisiddhanta, devotional conclusions, this sweetness of devotional conclusions that I am describing here in Bhaktira Samrichindu, goudha, it is very, very confidential, appease, still it is vyaktikritasti, it is explained. Explained by whom? By you Rupa Goswami, no, no. Originally it was sarva, it was completely explained in the bhagavatamritam, in the brihad bhagavatamritam of Sri La Prabhupad, of his Prabhupad, of Rupa Goswamis, of our Prabhupad, Sula Sanathan Goswami, Prabhupads, Brihad Bhagavatamritam. Expressed all of the bhaktisiddhanta madhuri, everything. So anyone who studies Brihad Bhagavatamritam with the commentary of Sri Sanathan Goswami will understand to the fullest extent the complete sweetness, the complete confidential sidhantas that are mentioned here in the Bhaktira Samrichindu briefly. So dear devotees, Sri Rupa Goswami now concludes by a verse in the meter Arya. And this verse is slishtha, slishtha means it has two meanings. So I will sing the verse in the Arya meter and I will explain the two meanings. So, usyatu, may he be pleased, may who be pleased? Sanatanatma, may that eternally existing personality, Bhagwan Krishna. Who has Gopal Rupa Shobham, who has a cowherd form as his beauty. Dadhapi, and although his beauty is manifested in a cowherd form, still Ragunath bhava vistari, still he manifests other forms such as Ragunath, Ram, Resim etcetera. May that Krishna, tushyatu, be satisfied in this prathamivibhage, in this first, you know, prathamivibhage sudhambu nithay, in that eastern division, in the first eastern division of this Bhaktira Samrichindu. This is the first meaning. Okay, second meaning, tushyatu, may he be satisfied, may who be satisfied, sanatanatma. You know, Shri Sanathan Goswami, whose own name is Sanathan, may Sanathan Goswami be satisfied. Acha, I described Sanathan Goswami, he is the shobha, he is the good fortune of Gopal Bhatt and Rupa Goswami, Gopal Rupa Shobham. He is the good fortune of Gopal Bhatt Goswami and Rupa Goswami. And although dadhapi, he is the good fortune of these two, but Ragunath bhava vistari. He helps Ragunath Das Goswami fully develop his own power. May that Sanathan Goswami be fully satisfied, this prathamivibhag, in this first eastern division of sudha, of Amrita Sindhu, Amritanidhey, of Sri Bhaktira Samritan Sindhu. So this dear devotees, you know, are the various names of the Goswamis, we can count what names are there, Rupa Goswami's name is there, oh yes. Sanathan Goswami's name is there, oh yes. Ragunath Bhatt, Ragunath Das, both names are there. Okay, Gopal Bhatt Goswami, yes. Jiva Goswami? Paramkarana Prabhu, we are missing somebody's name.
Yes, Prabhuji, I was also thinking that.
Okay. But so his name is not directly mentioned, he is younger to all of these. And indirectly his name is mentioned by mentioning Atma, because Atma means Jiva. So therefore dear devotees, in this way. The six Goswamis have also been mentioned, directly or indirectly, in the final verse of the fourth wave of the eastern division of Sri Bhakti Samrichindu. Sri Jiva Goswami's name might not have been directly mentioned, but Sri Jiva Goswami is the brilliant commentator. So this is what is the fourth wave of the eastern division of Sri Bhaktira Samrichindu, dear devotees. Many congratulations, you have crossed over into the southern section, but bhakti shastry doesn't cover the southern section, it is only the eastern section. But dear devotees, good knowledge does not wait for, you know, certification courses, good knowledge is a lifelong learning process. So even though our certification process may have stopped here, but lifelong learning should never stop. So I am hopeful that all of you will continue studying, understanding Sri Bhaktira Samrichindu. Because in the southern division, then Sri Rupa Goswami will begin describing, you know, what are the ingredients of Bhaktirasah, and those are very important to understand and study. So I'll pause my speech here, dear devotees, thank you very, very much. If there's any mistake in what I spoke, vidvamsaha, you are learned devotees, purayantutat, please correct any mistakes. Yadatra savsthamkichit, if there's anything nice, please know, tadguroreva. Rupa Goswami also said, if there's anything nice, it is all from Brihad Bhagavatamritam, see he did, you know, he also did the same. I am also doing the same, if there's anything nice, please know that it came from Bhaktira Samrichindu. Me nahi, I didn't compose a single verse here. Thank you very much, dear devotees, thank you so much Paramkarana Prabhu, Namodar Leela Mathaji for kindly inviting me in your wonderful bhakti shastry presentation, I am so happy, honored here. And I am hopeful that the devotees derive some nourishment from what I spoke. Thank you very much, Hare Krishna.
Thank you, thank you, thank you Prabhuji for such a wonderful, you know, we went through the entire prema bhakti section. And so wonderful, you covered all the verses, including the commentaries and explained some of the, I also had some doubts which got clarified as you were explaining, thank you so much. Do you, do, do you have time Prabhuji for?
Yeah, 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 we can, we can do a quick question, no problem.
Okay, so yes devotees, if you have questions, you can go ahead and raise your hands. And we will unmute or I will let devotees unmute. And yeah, please keep it to the topic of what we have discussed as far as possible. Okay, so we have few questions and Prabhuji, please let me know when you would like to, you know, depending on your time of availability.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's, what time is it there right now?
It is 6:53 PM right now.
So 6:53, we can go till 7:10 maximum.
About fifteen more minutes.
Yeah.
Alright, wonderful, thike Prabhuji, so we'll go with Rohini Nandan Prabhu, please go ahead.
Hare Krishna Prabhu, Thandwar Pranam, so nice to see you and hear from you after, you know, a long time. So Prabhu, the example about Chandrakanti, the Ragannuga Bhakti example. So does that automatically imply that when we talk about Ragannuga Bhakti, that the person follows a ragatmika bhakta? So does that automatically imply that she has followed a ragatmika bhakta in previous life or in that life?
Oh yes, oh yes. Oh yes, it automatically implies that she has followed, you know, a ragatmika bhakta in previous life. And I will quote a verse from the Bhaktira Samrichindu, Rupa Goswami will specify something. Just a minute. There is a verse, Praktanya adhuni kam, adhuni ke chaiti, yasya sadbhakti vasana. Esha bhakti rasaaswado, tasyaiwa hridi jayate, oh yes, it is not in the eastern division, it is in the southern division, so I will open the southern division and I will show you what Sri Rupa Goswami says about that. Yep, in the southern division, there is a verse, I am sharing my screen so that everybody can look. 216, Praktani adhuni kicha asti, yasya sadbhakti vasana. They who have vasana, impressions of sadbhakti, of this bhakti, of what type of, what type of impressions, Praktani adhuni ki. Praktani from previous lives, adhuni ki, in this life, both are needed. For such a person, tasyaiwa hridi, only in the heart of such a person, bhaktirasah aswada, there is the relishment of bhaktirasah. Now some of us may get a little disappointed, oh, we also need from previous lives. The Jiva Goswami also say, oh my goodness, what to do? We ask the question to Rupa Goswami and then he says, idhamapi praikam. This is in most cases, not in all cases, in some cases, it can also happen in this life, only in this life. But in the case of Chandrakanti, it is very clear that something from previous life was being carried. Right?
Thank you, we'll go to Narad Muniprabhu, go ahead please.
Hare Krishna, vanchakalpudru vaishya ke person is patita nam, pavne bhi vaishna vibyanam. Thank you for inviting me to this class and I really appreciate attending this class and listening from, from the Prabhuji. So I just one question, like you mentioned that Bali Maharaj and Gajend, they saw the lordship first before they had the Ragannuga Bhakti. So I understand that without the proper guru mantra, you cannot attain bhakti. So how that can happen, they have darshan of a lord before they can do the bhakti.
That is why it is categorized as hareerati prasadhu. Due to some inconceivable reason, Bhagwan became immensely pleased with them and appeared before them, even before they had attained prema. But this is not the usual method of attaining prema, the usual method is through sadhan bhakti. I think in the bhav bhakti section also, it was specified that there are two methods of attaining bhava, one is through sadhana and one is through krishnatad bhaktaprema, krishnatad bhaktakarunya. But the, the usual method of attaining bhava is through sadhan bhakti, through one's practice. In rare cases, one may attain directly by darshan of Bhagwan etcetera. But that is, it is inconceivable, we can't put a mechanical formula on why Bhagwan became pleased. This is what it is. So I hope that clarifies.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, there was a question that came in on the chat earlier, so I'll give it preference. So this question is from one of our bhakti shastry students. So he says that how does one handle the intense suffering of wanting to have but not having an eternal exciting friend like young Krishna for a regular human relationship? And one still has the material desires and tries to engage them as much as possible for Krishna, but unable to get past the intense depression and loneliness or the dead material states every day. As Krishna seems to be very far from one's qualification.
Can you, can you read the first line, in the first line, I think it needs careful reading again, how?
How does one handle that intense suffering of wanting to have but not having an eternal, exciting friend like. Uh, relationship with Krishna, in the regular human relationship with Krishna? Even though he says that there is very strong desire, but at the same time, there is this. Intense depression and loneliness of material states that, that Krishna seems to be very far.
Yeah, when, this is the case, when, you know, when Krishna is very far away, material desires are. Constantly taking over our lives. And we feel immensely depressed because of not attaining Krishna's personal association. Not attaining prema. In that case, one should, one should. Eagerly pray for, try to anchor for, one should eagerly get. The association of a premi bhakta. Because only in the association of a premi bhakta, who is sajatiya, who has a similar mood. Who also has sakharas. Towards Bhagwan. Will. One's. Hankering be satisfied. So, that is how one can. Go about. Uh, curing one's depression which has arisen due to this. Association of a premi bhakta. Who is in the same mood. Is the cure for all of. These issues. And if one has not attained the association of such a premi bhakta. One should cry for the association of such a premi bhakta. Very soon Krishna will be pleased and will bestow association of such a. Premi bhakta, so, that is the answer to the query.
Yes, Prabhuji, thank you. Next, we'll go to Vishwadeep Prabhu.
Hare Krishna Prabhuji, am I audible?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
First of all, Subha Yaathaya Prabhuji. And all I wish to. Keshavat, my Ratago Indusai Maharaj. So, uh, my question is, like. In fourteen words, you have mentioned, like, in the commentary, uh, Jiva Goswami Padde said. That Vaidhi Amsha Yuktat, Yuktat Kepi. That there is some Amsha of Vaidhi Yuktta when the K, uh, Kebala is. Not there, not Kebala. So, my question is, uh, that Amsha. Is it like some specific Amsha, Amsha of, uh, likes, uh, Vaidhi Bhakti or like it is. Uh, the Amsha that Shashan, Shashani, uh, Neva Shastas said that Amsha?
It is, see, somebody who has entered into the path of Ragannuka Bhakti. And they are sheltered, sheltered under a guru who is teaching them exclusively Ragannuka Bhakti. The guru will see the mood and disposition of the disciple and give those particular. He will specify those particular limbs of Bhakti for the disciple which are favorable for the disciple. And those limbs which are not favorable, the guru will say, okay, you don't need to do that. Right, huh, but. Uh. Some limbs of Bhakti. Which may not exactly nourish his raga, rag. Uh, but still. Due to some reason, he is continuing to follow. Now, what is the reason he is continuing to follow? Either the guru has told. Or, in the guru has told, it means the guru does not understand that the disciple has a need for exclusive Ragannuka Bhakti. So, either the guru has told. Or. Guru might not have told, but this person may be having fear. Oh, if I don't do this, what will happen? Oh, 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 if I don't, oh, 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 you know, so, what will happen? Arre Ma Vasudevah Bhakta Naama Shubham Vidyate Kuchhi, doesn't have the confidence. That there is no inauspiciousness at any time for the devotees of Vasudev. Oh, I don't want to get any inauspicious result. And so, that fear is there still somewhat. Therefore, he is still having vidhi Amsha. Uh, so, and sometimes Vaidhi Amsha is also there because the devotee does not feel qualified to enter fully into Ragannuka. The devotees knows that there is still some time before I take to complete Ragannuka Bhakti. So, still he is waiting. But if by the. By the time he attains prema, if he has fully switched to Ragannuka Bhakti. Then his. Prema will be of the nature of Kvala. So, that is the answer to the, I hope that satisfies your query.
Thank you, Prabhuji, I seconded. Kind of.
Yeah, this fear, oh, 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 what will happen, oh, you know, I, I am not able to do, oh, I am not able to do that. Oh, what will happen? So, this fear is there. It is nice for a Vaidhi Bhakta because a Vaidhi, with Vaidhi Bhakta needs that sort of fear and motivation. Otherwise, you know, they will become lazy and fall out of practice. But once raga, Ragamga Bhakti has commenced. Then the devotee should have a little bit of. Courage to give up those limbs. Which are not favorable for the attainment of. Shuddha Ragh.
They should not be done in, uh, Bhava Bhakti, right, this. Uh, that. Uh, suppose, that, that are not favorable, he will not do because of Ragh, so.
They should not even be done in Sadhandashaa. Not even, even before Bhava, because your Bhava is your Sthai Bhava. Your Sthai Bhava is your, going to be your permanent emotion. Before Sthai Bhava is attained in your Sadhandashaa, only. You should give up those limbs which are not favorable to the attainment of that sort of a, hmm. Bhava. Example, is going to the temple and seeing Radha and Krishna, oh. You're all having heavy jewelry and, you know, all the four Vedas are worshipping you and, you know, is having that awe and reverence. Mood in front of Radha and Krishna. So, you know, before he attends Bhava, he should give up that mood of awe and reverence and attain a mood of sweetness. And once that mood of sweetness is attained before the stage of Bhava. The, uh, uh, at least the aspiration for that mood of sweetness should be there. Then the Bhava that he attends will be according to his Saadhana, in the Saadhana stage, he has to give up those limbs. That is specified in the Ragavarkumchandrika. Of Shri La Vishwanath Chakro. Alright? Hmm, so, this is what it is.
Thank you. Uh. Rajesh Prabhu, I thought you had your hand raised, otherwise we'll go to. Did you have?
Yes, sir, I mean, uh, I have much more basic question, so, it looks like, uh, obviously Prabhuji has explained. Raga is superior to Saadhana Bhakti. Right, but when attains prema Bhakti, does it matter from which path? Uh, matters, like, at the end, when attends prema. The outcome is same, right? So, will it be, will it have any difference?
Rag, Ragannuka and Vaidhi are two types of Sadhan Bhakti. Rupa Goswami specified, there is Halabhed. There is difference in the result. What is the difference in the result? The difference in the result is that those who attain Bhava and Prema through Vaidhi Bhakti. Their Bhava and Prema is with Ayuswarya Jnana, with opulence, awe and reverence of Bhagwan. Those who attain Prema through Ragannuka Bhakti. Their. Prema is Prema Pradhana, there is, it is devoid of Ayuswarya Jnana, consists exclusively of. Sweetness of Bhagwan. Familiarity with Bhagwan. So, that is the difference in the nature. Superior, inferior will be decided by the practitioner who is practicing. Let the practitioner who is practicing decide what is superior for them. Let the guru who is giving instruction decide what is superior for a particular back. So, you know, this will evolve into that classic. Discussion on what is, is Vaikunta superior or is Goloka superior? Rupa Goswami's opinion is very clear, Vaikunta Janito Varah Madupuri Tatrapi Rasod Savad. Superior to Vaikunta is Mathura, superior to Mathura is Vrindavan. So, Rupa Goswami's opinion is very clear. But those who are practicing Vaidhi Bhakti, they place high importance on Vaidhi Bhakti. You go and ask people who are practicing Vaidhi Bhakti, see the importance that they place on Vaidhi Bhakti. You know, you will find them making statements as, you know, uh, as much money you deposit in the bank, that much you can withdraw. So, deposit more money today, huh? You'll find them making statements like that. And so, but, uh, the reason is because most people in the world understand Vaidhi Bhakti. Ragh Bhakti is something which is. Not understood. By most people in the world. So, therefore, Ragh Bhakti is very, very, very rare. Very rare. Very rare, you won't find Ragh Bhakti in the masses, you won't find Ragannuka Bhakti in the masses. Anybody who is saying that, you know, I will give Ragannuka Bhakti to the masses. They are not understanding that Ragannuka Bhakti is not for the masses. In the Vedastuti. Sutistuti. Tenth Canto, Chapter Eighty-seven. Uh, of the Shrimad Bhagavatam. Uh, there is something mentioned and I'd like to point out. In ten eighty-seven. Twenty-one. It is mentioned, some, there is something mentioned and I'll. Very quickly highlight this. Durabaga, durabagamatma, tattvanigamayata, bat, tanoshcharita mahamritabti paribharta parishramana. Kechid, I, I'll not explain the full verse, but speaking about the devotees. Uh, and Sri, Shri La Swedar Swami. Says, Kechid. Iti evam hutab Bhakti rasika virela iti. Very rare to find Bhakti Rasikas. Very, very rare. To find those who are actual Rasikas of Bhakti. Virala iti. You won't find them in the, uh, you know, in dozens, you won't find them. Virala. They are very rare to find because that attitude in a person. Very rarely develops. Most people still have that attitude for Vaidhi Bhakti, Sakala Jagata Morakari Vidhi Bhakti. So. Unless one spontaneously develops that attitude. For Ragannuka Bhakti. Unless one has proper guidance from the Guru Janas. Uh, it is very difficult to find such a person. Right, usually, most of the instructions you will find by the. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it is, uh, past seven-ten. And, uh, so, I think we will end it here, is that okay, Vishwadeep Prabhu, you can ask the question.
Yeah, I have, I have to go for the Vyas Puja. Uh, celebration of, uh, Utsev of my Guru Maharaj. Uh, my Guru Maharaj appeared on this day, Ratiyapada Day. I have to go attend his Vyas Puja ceremony, usually, I don't say no for Q and A. But I don't want to get late for Vyas Puja celebration. So, Vishwadeep Prabhu, you can kindly ask privately, I would very much appreciate that. Right?
Thank you, Prabhuji, thank you for such a wonderful class, I cannot thank you enough. And thank you so much for inspiring.
I am, I am shoe shining, I am a shoe shiner of Rupa Goswami, but thank you for shoe shiner. You don't give any thank you to shoe shiner, that's it, you shown, you shine the shoes nicely, chalo. Move ahead.
Get the tips. Being a shoe shiner of Sri Rupa Goswami is not anything either. Thank you, thank you for such wonderful explanation of Sri Rupa Goswami's. Uh, literature, it is, it's, you're, you're doing a very, very wonderful seva. To Sri Rupa Goswami, Shri La Prabhupad and the entire Vaishnava community. By giving us the deeper meanings that are present, that Sri Rupa Goswami intended. To be disseminated to the society of Vaishnavas. I.
There is, no, that, there is a Hindi proverb, Chirak Tale Andera. So, darkness directly under the lamp. So, that's who I am, you know, I may be. Uh, teaching, teaching, uh, devotees, but. I am that person who is sitting in the darkness under the lamp, so, that is my case, Chirak Tale Andera.
That's not my experience of, of you. So. Thank you, let us all appreciate and thank Prabhuji for his valuable time. By. Uh, you all can unmute yourself and express your thanks and soon, Prabhuji, we are hoping that we will resume some Krishna Katha. Uh, like we used to have before. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Prabhuji, thank you so much.
Hare Krishna, Prabhuji, thank you so much.
Hare Krishna, Prabhuji.
Hare Krishna, Prabhuji, thank you.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna.
Thank you, Prabhuji.
Thank you, Prabhuji.
Thank you, Prabhuji, Hare Krishna.
Thank you, Prabhuji, Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna.
Thank you so much, Hare Krishna, thank you, thank you so much.
Congratulations on the Vyas Puja.
Thank you, thank you so much, Prabhuji, Hare Krishna.
Thank you. Happy day.
Thank you, Prabhuji, I'll close the call.
Sure, sure.
Hare Krishna, thank you, dear devotees for joining.
Uh, please, uh, please, uh, Prabhuji, please upload the recording and send the link in the group.
Yes, Prabhuji, I will do that, definitely. And if you would like to upload it to your channel, I'll be happy.
Nah, you just do it to yours and just send the link in the group, right, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you, Hare Krishna. And to all the Bhakti Shastri students, thank you so much for joining. And we will, uh, give more instructions on the. Bhakti Shastri WhatsApp group, what's coming next. Thank you, Hare Krishna. You love Prabhupad.
Hare Krishna.